Hey. So, Barstool, how you doing? They make me work, they keep making me work. They make me work every Thursday, like nine to five. I'm think, I'm thinking of like just taking like a half day off. Or like, because it's, you know. Yeah, it's not like the old job where it was like. Two hour lunch once in a while, nobody cared. This one, it's like, it feels like they wait for you to be away from your desk. And then that, you hear that little beep, the email goes off. I know, I saw. Hey, how's it going? This guy is recording. We're broadcasting. Think so, but. Nah, his, his firm is the council for. His firm is the council. Yeah. Oh, here we go. We're broadcasting.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Township Council. Of the Township of Roxbury was given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. This follows on December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. Notice was emailed and faxed to the Daily Record, the North Star Ledger, the West Mars Reporter, and published in the Daily Record. Notice also remain closed during the year on the bulletin board in main hallway of the Municipal Building. Councilwoman Aubrey.
I'm here.
Councilman Carey. Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Here.
Councilman De Filippo.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
I'm here.
Councilman Riley.
Here.
Mayor Patello.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. We, um, as council those, we kind of changed our format up a little bit this year for the budget review. At the last meeting, um, which was the first budget meeting we have, we had, we discussed the water and sewer funds, both operating and capital. So we tried to combine those and, uh, give us a little more time to finalize the numbers for the operating and the capital budget for the current fund, general fund. And council has that, um, tonight. And my goal is to begin by, when we starting at the, at the beginning of that budget, getting through it, um, partially. Then, of course, at our next meeting, we can continue and then follow up from there as we need to have additional meetings and get additional information for council to consider before the final budget is proposed. So we have tonight, um, we'll go through a lot of the budgets. A lot of them are relatively straightforward and simple. Council's aware of that, they're relatively small, a lot of them don't change very much. We'll still discuss those, even if it's briefly. And tonight we have, um, three department heads with us here tonight. We have Melanie Machete from our engineering department. Matt Hall, and I believe is here from the PD, our new chief. And, um, I know I saw Tom Blantsey for fire, there may be some under fire here tonight. Not a hundred percent certain, but, um, we also want to discuss, um, the fire department, um, both the operating and capital budgets. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, okay?
Could you just stop for one second?
Absolutely.
Can you ask some people in the public who want to discuss a couple of things that are outside of the budget? And instead of keeping them through an hour or two of budget, I say that I speak to them. I'm going to open it to the public. Everybody, just do not talk about the budget. We have other things you'd like to talk about and that I have sent to folks on the open. Please raise your hand. Please come up, state your name and your address.
My name is Madison Amber. I live at twenty six Toby Drive in Sakasana. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak. Um, I've had the privilege of calling Roxbury home for the past twenty four years. Throughout my time, I've grown to love and deeply appreciate this community from Friday night football games to smiling faces walking around Horseshoe Lake. Uh, but there's one troubling aspect of our town that's remained a constant, and that's the intersection between Pleasant Hill and Elin Avenue. Over the years, this intersection has been the site of numerous accidents. I've personally known six individuals that have been involved in the accidents here, including Luke Stanich, John Tessero, Anthony Rallo, Jed Amber, and most recently, as of last night, Jay and Joyce Amber, ages eighty two and eighty five. Despite the town's ongoing efforts to address the safety concerns at this intersection, the problem persists. Initially, stop signs were installed, but that did not significantly reduce the frequency of these accidents. The addition of solar powered blinking stop signs followed, yet the results were still insufficient. Most recently, rumble strips and additional signage were added, but once again, these measures have failed to prevent further collisions. It's with great concern that I stand before you now, adding two more names to the scoring list of victims. Every time I witness flashing lights, fire trucks, and ambulances responding to another crash at this intersection, I'm reminded of the urgency of this issue. I personally work to raise awareness and support for the traffic light that needs to be built, but it seems that every effort is met with frustration and no meaningful change. So my question to the council is simple. How many more accidents must occur before action is taken? How many more victims must we count before a traffic light is installed? And is it really necessary for a tragedy potentially involving a child, perhaps one attending the elementary school just up the road, before this issue is addressed properly? Roxbury is a close knit community, and I have no doubt that once a decision is made to move forward with this change, the town will rally together to support it. Roxbury takes pride in its values, its history, and sense of community. But we can't take pride in a town where its citizens are continually at risk due to an intersection that has become infamous for its danger. It's time for change, and it's time to take action. We, the residents of Roxbury, are no longer asking for help, we're demanding it. The safety of our community, particularly our elderly and children, should no longer be compromised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. As you know, we talked earlier, we have the traffic, traffic committee, and we talked many years about that intersection. And since you noted, there's been many changes done besides the flashing lights, the rumble strips, uh, have residents cut the trees down so that there's a longer sight distance along the avenues. John, let's bring it up to another traffic, uh, meeting and go over this, this latest accident. I know the traffic accidents happen down there with the rumble strips. How many have there been lately?
I think we've been pretty good other than yesterday, but I could be wrong about one or two, but I'm not, I'm not aware of any since we've done a lot of the work with this one, obviously happened yesterday. I don't know the details personally.
People, people hurt. We need to put some concern for the injuries or the injuries.
I don't think there's anything significant, but I'm not a hundred percent certain. I don't have all the details of what occurred yesterday. Understood.
The addition of the people who were involved in the accidents, I'm concerned.
Is anyone else in the public?
Kyle Smith, twelve Cedar Lane, Sakasana. Wanted to bring up the point that, uh, the paving budget in Roxbury, and I'm not sure if we're going to be discussing it tonight or not, but, uh, Cedar Lane has been skipped over many, many years. And, uh, petition back here, sent to the town council back in two thousand thirteen, alerting them the necessary need for Cedar Lane to be paved. At that time, uh, several other surrounding streets were paved, but somehow Cedar Lane got skipped at the time. And we kept on thinking that it was going to become another year, it would be there next year, it would be there next year, it would be there next year. It never happened. We resigned the petition in two thousand nineteen, nothing happened. Two thousand twenty two, we spoke up again. I have several emails to Rick Blood. He promised that at the time, he couldn't guarantee that it would happen in twenty twenty two, but it's on the horizon, and I can guarantee that it will be done in twenty three and twenty four. I have that right here in writing from Rick Blood, that it's going to be done in twenty three or twenty four. Here we are now, twenty five. I hear there's budget talks, paving. I stress the fact that if you're going to do any road in town, it better be Cedar Lane. If you ask Mr. Sinis, I'm sure he will say that Cedar Lane is probably one of the worst capital roads in Roxbury. So when you're planning your budget, I hope that you'll consider Cedar Lane as top priority.
I mean, we always have to go through the budget unless we have no road parade paving program this year, which I can only anticipate, that's not recommended. Cedar Lane is on there one hundred percent. The gentleman's comments about the road being one of the worst, it probably, it may be the worst. We were going to do it last year, we didn't have enough funding because we have serious, significant base repairs there because of the condition of the road. So it's not just the mill and pave, it's base repair, which is, those costs are probably more expensive than the actual mill and pave. We want to do it right, we don't want to do it not through the base repair because in five years it'll be garbage. So, um, the comments are, are, are well taken. They've waited, they've certainly waited a longer than they should have.
It did, but just as a reminder, the, the, the need that Cedar Lane is so bad is because it was delayed for so long. And as you guys consider other roads that need to be paved, it, it, when you kick the can further down the road, it just makes a bigger problem as you, as you go down further and further. There's, there's, there's so many road, I don't know how many, how many, do you know how many miles of road there are in Rox, Roxbury town owned roads?
I think municipal roads are about a hundred and fifteen miles.
Hundred and fifteen mile, so what, what do you think the average road surface lasts twenty years?
In twenty, some are thirty if they're built right and their side streets, they can last thirty years. But a twenty is a reasonable number to work with.
So we have to be paving a certain amount, I, I don't, I can't do the math quickly in my head, but it should be like fifteen miles of road paved if I'm correct, fifty, maybe it's about, ten?
Maybe more like six or seven would probably get us, if we were in that cycle, that would probably be reasonable.
Six or seven miles of road. Do we have the funding to do six or seven miles of road this year?
Depends on the year. This year is going to be tight, we've got to give it some extra cost. But we, we're, we're at the very beginning of our budget, John, I see you giving us. We just, we just received it from, from John on Friday.
Okay.
So it's pretty short. When we have some roads that are so heavily traveled, that we think that they're repaired, and they do so much, we go back and have to do that for them. It looks like they're average, things like that. And that really upsets us. But I think if you look at the budgets that we've given the last couple of years, the number of years we try to fix. Top things on our list are really roads, number one, and trying to do the rest. And it's tough to catch up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Deputy Mayor.
I wanted to actually, I, I brought the, the residents of Cedar Lane with us to show you how, how much it was.
We pay taxes too. Let's get them done.
Kyle, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk while you were still at the mic. We, we have a lot of feeder roads in Roxbury, but a heavily traveled roads in Roxbury.
So is Cedar.
So our game plan was to hit those as quickly as possible because they get used so much. I think we're at a point now, as, as John had mentioned, where we can backtrack and, and take care of Cedar Lane for you. So just so you know, there, there is a plan behind what we're doing here. Thank you.
And based on those comments, I won't, I won't take that too much time. Yeah, Jim Hadjel, fifteen Cedar Lane. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat anything Kyle said, he said it, uh, the other way. Uh, the road hasn't been paved since we've been there, that was two thousand and five. It's become a hazard, not just for cars, but also for pedestrians. I know a neighbor, the elderly neighbor who lives next door, no longer walks on the road because he's concerned about falling. As an attorney who works in this area, uh, obviously now the town is on notice of issues with the road. So if someone does get hurt walking on the road, jogging on the road, um, it's obviously going to be an issue for the town. So, uh, we're hopeful that, you know, the excuse that we can't do it because so much needs to be done because we ignored it for so long. Uh, I don't think that that excuse is going to, it's going to be something that's going to fly if, if an issue arises. So, uh, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you coming.
Thank you for your comment. Is anyone else in the public? See, none of them are closed to public, we'll have notes. I'm sorry, that.
Yeah, I just wondered, so they want to say about the road.
Cindy Graham, eighteen Forest. I'm the original person who started all petitions in two thousand thirteen, nineteen. I walked every single house in the neighborhood. So after what, like he was saying, it took so long to get paved, but Cedar, I walk that, you can't walk on that road. And also, the gas company ripped up all the newly paved roads, and they repaved everything. But Cedar, because they said it was so bad, they couldn't mill one side, it was just in such bad shape. So now, not only is the road bad on the one side that's been bad, now where they ripped it up for the gas company, you've got that thing in the middle, you've got pieces and patches that are sinking. It's really, really a hassle. It's just like, to me, it should be number one, I know it's going to be more money, but it's been neglected forever. It's really in bad shape. I won't even walk on that street anymore.
Thank you for your time. Is anyone else in the public? See, none of them are closed to public. We'll have another public set after this presentation.
Okay, s, not a problem at all. It's good to hear from the residents first. The, um, so we're going to have the operating, and we're going to do a little bit of capital. For who we have tonight with us, we don't have a lot of capital projects. We can kind of toggle back to the capital budget a little bit, talk about those. But, um, I just wanted to give, everybody's had a chance probably to read my budget message. I just wanted to read two sentences, two or three sentences out of there for the council, uh, just to kind of set the stage and for anybody that's here tonight. You know, while Roxbury still maintains a favorable fund balance as in two thousand twenty four, limited revenue growth has placed additional strain on the two thousand twenty five budget. Uh, the result is a capital budget while increased from two thousand twenty four, um, it's still not sufficient to address all the capital needs of the township. In the future years, the township should look at alternative funding mechanisms to support the capital budget while continuing to build revenue to support the budget. In two thousand twenty five, there are no new staff positions. Fortunately, in two thousand twenty four, the township was successful in retaining key employees as well as attracting new employees when vacancies occurred. The council knows, um, it's not always easy these days to keep and retain, um, employee or retain and attract employees. We've done a pretty good job with that, and I want to thank everybody for that and for the council that's been supportive on our key township staff. To balance the two thousand twenty five budget, a proposed tax increase in the current fund is two point five percent. The proposed tax increase for the average residential property in Roxbury is approximately sixty dollars per year, which equates to five dollars per month. Obviously, depending on your assessed valuation of your property, it can be more or less than that, but that's the average, just so council has some idea what that impact is on the, on the, on the taxpayer. That being said, I want to start at the beginning. So we're going to go through these individual.
Before you move on, John.
Yes.
You pointed to a couple of key items that really affected the budget.
Yeah.
And the impact.
Okay, absolutely, Joe, I'll get to, I'll do those right now, and then we can talk about them again when we get to those line items. But thank you, we can talk about those now. But you know, I mentioned number one, data processing. It's not a big amount, it's only twenty six thousand dollars, but it's a significant increase percentage wise. So if you take a look at that, um, we have a lot of equipment maintenance contracts. We're doing more cloud based. We talked about this with our technology committee, with the three members of council on that, and also our, our IT director, Rob Conken. So, you know, when you see that line item, you see that budget increase, it's a substantial amount. Percentage wise, it's not a huge number, but try to call it as ones that really are kind of an anomaly to, than compared to what we normally see. In two thousand twenty five, the big one is group insurance. Um, our health insurance premiums increased. We're in state health benefits, which is run by the state of New Jersey. They increased by approximately eighteen percent. Our line item for group insurance increased by nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So when you think about that amount of money for current employees and retirees who, for ones who are still eligible to obtain or to receive, um, healthcare through the town, that number is significant. Everybody on this council was here in two thousand twenty three when we received a twenty five percent increase in that medical insurance, was again, was sticker shock in twenty three, sticker shock again in twenty five. I also mentioned, just for reference, that all the employees pay a portion of that because everybody pays a significant amount of money into their health insurance cost. If they didn't, it would be even more of an impact on the township budget. But that's a big number, and our only option with that, obviously, is to look for some other benefit plans that are out there. We went to state health benefits probably back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I wasn't with the township at that time, and I think we did it because it was a cost savings. Last year, we did look a little bit, we kind of felt around a little bit out in the market to see what else we could get and provide us some more information, some more loss runs, to another, it's like a HIF, like a JIF, the Health Insurance Fund. And they actually said they could, the rate that state health was providing us, which was kind of a shock, considering how expensive it is. It's one I don't have the answer to, I just know it's a significant cost for us. It just is, it is, especially coming out of the year. Well, we all remember the one from two years ago. It was just that sticker shock, and how are we going to absorb, and we absorb it into our budget. So we talked about not being able to do capital, not being able to do things. Instead of spending, let's just say, seven hundred thousand of the nine twenty five on capital projects, we pay it to the state for health insurance.
So is this sustainable, is it, does it go up and down? What, what, what do you think is going to happen in the future? It's not going to go down.
It's definitely not going to go down.
Sometimes we get smaller increases, a few percent.
That was a, was a smaller, I think it was like seven percent last year. And this year it's eighteen percent. And also, one thing to keep in mind is we had a lot of retirements this year. So not only are you carrying the retirements, you're also carrying the employees. So that's kind of drives the cost up also.
There's, um, as we've negotiated some of the contracts going forward, some relief from the future?
There is, I mean, the primary relief in the future is with the non-uniform, right? The police are a little bit different, just how their pension works, when they can retire, some of the agreements we've made with them. But for the non-uniforms, eventually, that, um, retiree healthcare benefit goes away for various reasons. One, because the pension age increases to sixty five, we've written out of those union contracts that it takes time to get there.
It's important, but that's, it's down the road.
It's, it's down the road. I think unfortunately, most of us will no longer be here by the time those benefits kick in, but it's still beneficial to the township. Uh, but in the interim, we, we have some significant bills to address. Um, I mentioned pensions a little bit, our police pension obligation went up. Actually, for the non-uniform, it went down, which is amazing because usually the pension obligations go up. So that impacts us, it's good for the town to be, just to be aware of that, um, and, you know, how that impacts us. Anytime we can get that close to zero, that's wonderful because we pay a lot in for the pension contribution for, for all the employees who are eligible for the defined benefit pension plan.
That might be the time to prioritize the mortgage.
Yeah, yeah, and, 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 you know, depending on when people left and, you know, years ago, people could retire earlier, even on the non-uniform sides. You could maybe retire at fifty five, you were covering someone for a ten year gap until they got to sixty five to be eligible for Medicare. So that kind of went away with how the state does the pension plan for the non-uniforms. Now you have to be sixty five to retire. But for a lot of employees that have been here, that's not the case, it's for the newer employees. So it'll, it'll take some time to get there. It is, it is. And for anybody that's retired, their benefits, you know, never change. That's just not legal for changing those for benefits for people.
There's no talk of pooling risk somewhere in the state, uh, some way to approach it?
Yeah, we, we did, we did reach out to the HIF, and they basically took our loss runs and said we couldn't contract.
It's, it's a tough one, I mean, I wish we had better answers for the, for the council. Preserve for future appropriations, we have a hundred thousand included in the budget for the fire company, number two, the engine. I originally wanted to put three hundred in, I just couldn't make that work this year. I think as we discussed this budget, we need to try to weigh to put more, to put some more money in there. Valerie just got some updated fund balance numbers yesterday, we haven't had a chance to analyze those yet, but we're going to, if we can, we'll try to, you know, increase that number. I'm sure council's going to want to increase that number. Our goal is to try to have as much of that paid for of all of it whenever that truck arrives in a few years.
We can get our fund balance, what we've used over the last eight five years.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get all the information for you. We just, again, I think the numbers you got late yesterday afternoon from Val and her, we didn't even have a chance to talk about it. So we'll get more information on that as we discuss the budget. Uh, and one final item, which is, you know, noteworthy, I think from an operating standpoint, um, doing a great job paying off the turf field. Um, I mentioned how much we collected user fees, which is a significant amount. What we paid in, in, in debt service, we're only using a small amount of our recreation trust fund to make that payment, which is how we planned it. And I think that's heading in the right direction, Councilman Paul.
Yeah, and I just want to make the public really, this is all self liquidating debt. This is not coming out of regular taxation whatsoever. This is money that was previously saved, and it's, it's coming out of a recreation trust fund account.
And the users.
And the users that are, that are, that are paying the standard, this is no taxation, increase their public.
Yeah, user fees, that's a great way to go.
It is, that's working out really well financially, it's working out really well. We increased that by five dollars, I think, two years ago or last year, and I think we're, that's working out really well. That's a great thing, that pays itself off, and we don't have to use any general tax. That's how that was designed when that project was built a few years ago. So, that all being said, just a little bit of the overview.
I want to think here in that list was the sidewalks going to corns far.
Yes.
And, uh, my question on that is, there was a grant for seven hundred and something thousand dollars. Was that granted, you know, for?
Well, if you, if you will, Deputy Mayor, could we, if we can do it sequentially, we're going to get to it tonight.
That'd be great.
Will we get to engineering, then we're going to bring Melanie up, we're going to do operating, we're going to do capital, if that's okay? But I'll get, I'll get unorganized.
It's one of the things in your no view list.
Yes, yeah, we definitely have that tonight while she's here, we'll talk about what we've received in the grand and what, how we think that project will work. You're welcome. Excuse me, so again, starting off with, um, administration, I'm going to start down with, it's, the account is twenty dash one hundred. I mean, again, I'm on the operating side, I do not have that page number if anybody needs. Lenora, I'm going to ask for your help. Page four, thank you. So, again, this is for the, um, my office, there's a few employees in there, there's some operating costs. The, um, the budget is relatively same as two thousand twenty four. We added some money in there for unused vacation buyback that we haven't had in the past in previous budgets. So, um, if there's any questions on administrative and executive, twenty dash one hundred. Okay, so we're going to go, and I, and I will mention the ones that I'm skipping because I don't think there's a reason to discuss, but if anybody wants to discuss them, we will. I will mention them. Central stores. Central stores, the budget decreased slightly from two thousand twenty four. Mailing materials, copy release, things of that nature. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but if I go too fast, please let me know, or we can always go back to any of these we do.
Do we order more lease on the condos?
Those are leases.
Yeah, we leased them.
We just, we just, just did it.
We did a lease and, um, actually it was a little bit cheaper, that's why I don't imagine we can go a little bit.
So the next, um, categories for the town council. Town council budget went down just a little bit. Yeah. Elections, the election budget stayed flat. Elections, the election budget stayed flat. Something near and dear to the clerk's heart.
And that kind of is what it is.
Right.
The money is stable.
She didn't appreciate my joke about elections.
She doesn't think it's funny?
No, that's not a, that's not a good topic. The next department is the finance department. I apologize. Let's go to clerk. Go too fast. Yeah, so clerk is up by a few thousand, about five thousand dollars overall, small increase in clerk is related to wages for full-time primarily. Same number of employees in the front office.
John, if I could just say, I like what you did on the bottom here, where you have the actual difference from two thousand and twenty-four.
I don't, do we have that last year, guys? I don't, yeah, we had that last year, did we? I don't remember seeing it. Which one?
On, on the bottom of each one of our tabs, you can see, he puts the difference from what it was last year on the bottom.
I don't remember seeing that page, was it there?
I think it's the same.
Yeah, well, anyway, I think it's, I think it's very nice. Good, good. All right, I'm going to jump out to finance now, since I remember the clerk. So finance changes a little bit with, um, just wages, some wages for full-time. Some things we had agreed to last year, we included in the budget for this year for one employee. Most of the other line items stay the same. And the overall percentage increases relatively the same, same number of staff in the finance department. So I'm going to skip over audit because it's pretty straightforward. Yeah, some of the ones just are so, they, they're not much to discuss, but we can discuss them if needed. Data processing is next. Excuse me, so data processing, I had mentioned earlier when I did the overview about the increases in the equipment maintenance service contracts. Whenever we had our committee meeting a few weeks ago, um, that Mark and Fred and Sean, who's not here tonight, were in attendance at, we went over all those various contracts and I think that the committee was satisfied with what we're doing. And also I can say that Councilman Hall certainly had some concerns, um, just about how we're handling all of our security issues. So I think he was satisfied with that discussion. And Fred, I don't want to misquote you.
No, I think Mark can attest that we had a very nice meeting and, uh, obviously with everything going on in the world, we want to make sure that we're, we're safe and secure with our personal identifiable information.
And, and we're doing more, we're trying to do more training, more employee training with trying to make sure we don't get involved in various things that occur with the ceiling those.
Is, so is the increase attributable to the increase in security?
Part of it is, part of it's more training related to that, but part of it is just the equipment contracts. So we're doing more cloud-based things and more cloud-based things apparently have more annual maintenance costs related to them.
We're still also on a revolving cycle of the PC's.
Right.
Which we started about five years ago.
Right. It's a perfect introduction to the capital budget for, for data processing. So I will, I will reference the capital projects that were, that are related to the specific departments we discussed. There aren't a lot of capital projects for tonight based on the departments that are presenting. But if you, if you had a chance to take a look at the capital plan for the, um, information technology department, Deputy Mayor just mentioned about replacing the PCs, which is, we're doing that on an annual basis. That's around twenty-four thousand dollars. We have some network infrastructure upgrades planned at the cost of about twelve thousand and some security equipment and supplies, cameras and things of that nature at around thirty-four thousand dollars. We did have one other project, unfortunately, I recommended moving to an out here, um, the sound system in this room just because of financial constraints. Good project, needed project. It's just we have to pick and choose what we believe we need the most. So I don't know if there's any questions on those.
What you just said is people really don't need to hear us.
Well, I don't know how to, I guess it depends what we have to say, right? It's, it's.
Point of view, John, that's what.
It's an important project. I make recommendations, council makes decisions, so we all have our jobs to do. See if it works. I support paving sooner or later. They heard you, so it works, right? But I don't know if anybody has any questions on those, on those projects. We discussed those at the committee level. I think the committee was satisfied with the, uh, discussion on that. Okay, good, thank you. Next is tax collection, I believe, what's it, what's it, right? Tax collection, slight increase in collection, I think so much related to wages in the department, but other than that, that budget is relatively flat. A lot of those costs are split out with water and sewage, you know, because they collect for all the utilities and for, and for taxes. Next is the assessor. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at that budget, it's gone down significantly, which is great. In two thousand and twenty-four, council authorized the hiring of a part-time tax assessor to replace our full-time assessor. And I can report back to you, and I believe Valerie will concur, that was a great decision. We're getting everything we need and the number of hours we have here, totally satisfied. So this is a, this is a nice cost savings for the town and no reduction in services. I'm sorry, Jim? Yeah, well, we still have, we still have, we still have one full-time employee, right? We have a full-time assistant and then we have a part-time assessor. So the assessor is at three days a week rather than five.
Are we saving on the, uh, full, what salary?
Oh, yeah, it would definitely, we would definitely save on the health, on the healthcare piece, absolutely.
Got it.
Absolutely. So next is legal services. We've reduced those line items where we believe we can. As council recalls, last year, we included some additional funding for some potential litigation that we thought we might be facing, but we don't believe that threat continues.
There, I don't think there's a need for that extra.
So we.
Or for a new house.
We're on the other side of the budget.
But, you know, we certainly reduced that. We can look at that again, we try to be careful just so we don't have, you know, we're not missing any funding. But, um, you know, we've tried to look at that and reduce it where we think we can, but if we want to spend some more time on that, we certainly can.
I, I would fly that, because even if it's not something we're making a decision tonight on, by the time we get to the end of this process, it's much, um, we could certainly make that in. And I think by then, we'll have a better understanding of what the potential litigation that we're trying to finish right now.
Okay.
I think there's, you know, I don't know if we get to six figures, but we get a nice chunk.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We've taken it down where we can, we can spend more time on it, so at, at least it's a good start. There may be more there. So the next budget is engineering. I'm going to ask Melanie Machete, Melanie's our town engineer, who everybody knows very well. More long-term employees to come up. And we're going to talk about Melanie's operating budget and then also some capital projects, which include the deputy mayor's comments concerning the Eland Avenue sidewalk project, which is grant funded. So you can take a look at engineering, some of the engineering budget has increased in salaries. You can see that number. If you recall, last year, we were fortunate enough to finally hire an additional full-time engineer in the engineering department. It was a reward down a staff person about, for about a year and a half. So again, those, those salaries are spread out between utilities and also the, um, current fund, but, um. She could go back to putting her feet up, I mean. If she had a place on her desk to rest her feet, she could do it. So, she needs a bigger office. But again, a lot of those line items in engineering, operating are very similar. The wages are a little bit higher, which we just explained. So I don't know if there's any, you know, any comments or questions about the operating side of, of engineering. We have the same number of staff that we've had in the past. One of the line items that's up a little bit is part-time inspections. We have a little bit more there. But keep in mind, usually when we, when we're doing part-time inspections with our staff, there's usually a permit associated with it. So there's a road opening permit, there's some sort of permit that you don't see the revenue side of that, there's revenue generated. And we just did more, you know, did more last year. So it's kind of like fire prevention, you see the wages go up, there's revenue on the other side of that. So it's actually not a, not a bad thing. So for engineering, again, we, uh, we have a few capital projects for, for this year. And one of them is stormwater compliance. Council's familiar with that. That's one that we fund, um, every year. A lot of things we have to do are related to our DDP permit for stormwater discharge. And we purchase a lot of things out of there related to these stormwater drainage systems. So we've tried to keep our funding relatively consistent with that. So that's one project. There were some other projects in engineering. Some of these projects, you'll, you're, you'll be familiar with them, we've had to push them out because just there's funding constraints, so we continue to move some of those, some of them are drainage-related, stabilization projects, things of that nature. We push some of those. But what, what, what we do have included in two thousand and sixteen, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-five is we have the, um, the Dell Avenue paving project for two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's what we received in grant funding. Council recalls, we anticipated receiving a lot more. We've done, over the past few years, we've received a lot more money from the DOT, we just didn't in two thousand and twenty-five. So we're going to scale that project back and probably want to do that in phases over a few years. And that's Dell Ave, heading out, you know, away from town and eventually get you past the drive within the public works building for you, for the folks to drive out there. It's a concrete acre, there's a lot of heavy traffic there and it's not in the greatest of shape. The other large project that we have included is the sidewalk project on Eland Avenue, which provides access to Commodores Park. And the seven hundred and three thousand dollars is the grand amount we received from the state. Excuse me, we do have that in place. It's going to be tight, Melanie hasn't hit that yet, but I think her design estimates more than that, it's going to be tight. So if we're lucky enough on our, on our, on our bids, if council authorizes it, we'll be able to do it with the grant funding. If we're a little bit short, we're going to have to make a decision. We're either going to have to, you know, not do the project, which that's a lot of money we want to table, or we're going to have to go for some old capital money and see if we can add a little bit if we, if we run a little bit short. But, um, again, that, that's a grand project that we have and we really need. If we don't do it, we're obviously going to lose it. That, that's good probably for two years, but we really need to get it moving. Because keep in mind, we have the paving money that we held up for a year. I think we have to have that under contract by November of this year.
That, that's, that's why these add-ons sometimes get to be a problem, because now we've got additional funding, but it requires a special condition.
And we tried to get a, um, we're trying to get an extension on our paving because of this funding and so far, I'm not so sure we've been successful with the other paving.
We are ahead of the schedule.
Not with this project, with the paving, not with paving, not with this, we both, not with the paving.
We have two years to paint. We're, so we're already one year gone. Under the current, without requesting an extension, it has to be awarded by, uh, November first of this year in order to not lose the funding.
So what do you think we'll know about the sidewalk?
If, if you authorize us to proceed with, um, the sidewalks, I will get the surveyor out as soon as possible, get that authorized and, um, proceed with that. And, um, if we can move this quickly through, we could probably, we, we should be able to, um, award in November and then construct next year.
How long will you be able to take the work up the engineering?
I, my, uh, survey work is about, say, two weeks' worth of work. Because there's certain areas that are a little bit tighter than others. And then the balance of it may be another month and a half, two months.
And then you should get moving.
Yeah, so I really would like to, like.
So have we got sign off by the residents there as well?
I'm sorry?
Have we had a sign off by the residents?
We, we have to.
Last time we did this.
Yeah, we should. Yeah, we definitely want to talk to people, depending on councils, we're kind of where we stand on this. If you want to move forward, we should talk to them. I think we're going to, our work's within the right of way, but obviously we don't want to have every resident along there unhappy with the decision.
I, I think the issue there, Mr. Riley's point was that there's a lot of trees that would have to be removed. And I think the residents had a concern about the removal of the trees.
I've talked to some of the residents. And with that talk to, I have such large white cars. We need so much of a concern. The ones I talked to, we have little children, we have more ancestors that, that's not. My real question is, we're still going to work on seeing if we can get it done, maybe seven hundred and three thousand dollars. Perhaps there's other things we can do. You need problems to get children down that road.
I think the sidewalks are more important than the trees. Some of those trees, there, there are some ash trees along the roadway that have to come down. So one way or the other, they should be coming down. And they are large diameter trees. If I recall, when I was out, um, there are a number that are marginal that should be coming down. So even though they're there, they're tall, they're tall, they're, they're, uh, they have foliage. They're at, some of them are at the point that they need to come down.
These are town trees?
These are town trees. Well, there are trees within the right of way.
Yeah, they, I don't think they're street. I would say if they're not part of an approved subdivision, a planning board decision to put street trees there, just a tree in the right of way doesn't make it ours. But in this, in this, in this instance, if we're going to do a project, we would be removing the trees because it's our project. We wouldn't tell a resident to remove a tree in the right of way so we can do our project, that would be part of the project. But if, for instance, an ash tree, that if someone is within the right of way, they're going to eventually have to remove that if it's the dead or dying, which if it's an ash tree, it is.
We need to communicate this with the residents, how do we, how do we propose doing that?
I think that if council's in agreement with moving forward with this, at least at this point, we could just get a, get a resident meeting together. We'll work on scheduling it and getting it in, get, we should, we'll get the engineering plans in order.
I don't think our, our agenda's changed since we talked about this last year. And that is, we want, we need sign off, we need to get an idea of what it's going to cost, so we decide whether we want to move forward with the project. That hasn't changed.
The tough part about this one is just the budget.
Because if it turns out to be two hundred thousand dollars, we can't, you know.
Right, right, it's hard. We have an estimate, but it's, it's going to be tight.
So it's just, but you, but the, but the look is not great because you're trying to have a big grant, but it's not something we were planning on doing. We got to grant the paving on purpose.
Right, right. If they're dead or, if they're dead or dying, they'll have to, and there's other ones that they may want to for other reasons, just because if they become so large, they're, you know, unwieldy.
So is there a consensus that we should just have a resident meeting? I think we got to decide whether we, whether we should get a cost analysis.
Well, Melanie's engineering estimate is a little bit more than the seven oh three. Her estimate is probably a little bit conservative, which is what engineers do. So whether we could do this for seven oh three, that's where I'm just saying it's going to be tight. We don't know that for certain, because a lot of times, you know, the estimate, sometimes they're really on it, sometimes they're really off. Sometimes they're high, sometimes they're low.
The seven three, it's just for the sidewalk component or the sidewalk?
That's just the sidewalk, just the sidewalk and all the work associated with survey work and things of that.
That includes the removal of the trees, correct?
Yes.
So.
Those block down the side and stuff?
Yes.
Do we have to put those blocks down?
We need to have, uh, a, a barrier between pavement and the, where the sidewalk is going to go. Otherwise you're going to, you're going to, you're going to have sidewalk up here, grass that's here, your, 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 um, your, your pavement's going to come in like this and you're going to lose your shoulder.
If I can suggest one, we have to proceed so that we can make a decision in thirty days, right? We have thirty days, I, I have to think back in the envelope in my head to say, move forward? Or, or you want us to make a decision sooner?
I would, I would like, personally, I would like to have an authorization to proceed to the, um, design work, at least the survey work, the certain areas that, um.
So, so will the design work give us a better cost estimate?
Yes, yes, okay.
I think that makes sense to move forward with that. If we decide not to do it, then we decide not to do it.
About twenty thousand. Approximately.
I hate spending the money, but seven hundred thousand goes in the balance.
Does it make sense to reach out to the residents first before we spend the twenty thousand dollars? To see if there's a consensus that whether or not they even want this to occur?
We could do that, we could do that, but I think what we'll have to show them is going to be limited.
Right. You need a design.
Because we're not going to, we could, we could have a, we could have an illustration, but it may not be that.
We could have like a fifty fifty type of this. Those are the local characters, obviously, like the sidewalk.
What do we normally do though, like when we're doing water lines, Jen? I can't remember what it is. Is it like sixty percent? To put in water lines at seventy percent? I'm just thinking about.
Well, water's not handed to a sewer.
No, but I'm saying it's, it's normally like a little.
We normally subsidize it by twenty percent on project that door.
Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, I think you're talking about how many people you want to say afford before you can afford. Yeah, I, that, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
It improves access to the park.
It does, I mean. I think the thought is a lot of people are going to use the sidewalk that don't necessarily live in front of them. Or, or it's their frontage, but of course it impacts the people, but it's their frontage. Well, it should be safer. All right, that's for certain. Why don't we see if we can pull together something with the residents? We'll keep you posted, some council members being involved are valuable.
I would suggest if, if, if consensus is probably what to do, we should see the study is to do the study. Cause that way we can pull the trigger on whether we're going to leave this funding in here or not. Before the end of this budget cycle. We, we wait, we don't get a resident meeting for two months?
Yeah, we, we're going to pull something.
Can't spend the rest.
We got to pull something.
And that's, and that's going to, that's something to resolve. I think we know what they think. We need to make a better case for why this is beneficial to them and to the, to the community. I, I, I think we should go ahead with the design. Yep. That's, that's me having a consensus, yeah, right?
I'd rather go ahead with the, you know, the resident thing first, but if the, if the.
We're going to have to have that meeting if we decide at the design stage, we're going to go forward. We got to have that, that meeting. A strategy to go ahead and start the design phase. As you get going, you can more have the house, the house, like where we are.
Okay.
Get away until it's ready and eighty percent in, you're going to know where it's going to stand. And we can start talking to everyone, the residents. And Andrew, how's it going, Ryder? When it gets to the budget, we should tell us that.
Because that's a hundred thousand dollars we can put somewhere. Okay, so that's engineering. So Melanie, that's the shit.
Thanks, Melanie.
Historic Society is next. That's, we've been providing four thousand in funding. For a while, I usually get to skip that, well, if anybody has any comments on, on that. I think E D C, um, that funding level's been at ten thousand dollars for some years. Now it's projected to remain, remain at that amount. Well, we have the five, we have the additional five that we get from the grant from Cablevision. They do.
I think we have about four years left. It was like a fifteen year obligation that they had in one place.
Getting close to the end of the franchise, right? That I don't know, but. Yeah, five thousand's not what it was fifteen years ago. So that's E D C. The zoning board, um, some of the zoning board costs have gone up. It's primarily related to, um, their legal services, some of their hearings, some of their costs related to legal.
It's the jump in contracted services, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, two or three, since, um, ninety percent of the zoning permits don't utilize escrow. It's just, you know.
The hearings. The zoning board hearings.
Board hearing. And when Russell was there, when we had an in-house person, we were able to do all that review in-house. So that's why that line item is a little bit more. So we're saving money, not on, on the salary wide, on the salary wide item for planning, but we're spending a little bit more on the contracted services or their internal review.
And the ones that don't have that escrow, as Val mentioned, just the ones we have, is like usually presidential applications for residents to keep the cost down for them. Planning board. Uh, we've done some updates on that, on some of the, um, adjusted some of those numbers for various staff. And also some of our contracted services that we have for planning board now. We used to planning consults, we don't have a full-time staff person in charge of the department. We've adjusted those, those numbers accordingly. So that overall budget for the planning board is actually reduced, um, pretty significantly. If there's any questions on the planning board.
Did we add money to this group, some of that potential litigation as well?
I don't think we did for litigation as much as I think even for contracted services, we, you know, I think we weren't certain exactly how things were going to work out without having a staff person, how much work there was going to be, escrow work versus non-escrow work. So I think that, um, you know, it was significantly less than we thought. Cause again, all the escrow work that we're getting.
Well, listed, listed under two oh four and actually specifically says.
Okay, well, it could be related to some of the things we were thinking about doing at Hercules too. Um, so we've, we've reduced that one, reduced those as much as we can. Well, we can reduce, we could probably even reduce that to a four a little bit more, but we took it down from where we started in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
I don't think it should come down at all. I'm, I'm pretty sure we have a fairly significant project. Yeah, there's still some unknown.
Yeah, we still have money in there for planning studies. We actually overbored budget last year, but we reduced that some. We don't think we're going to have quite as much there. We still like that line item from the planning board, you know, for things that council directs us to do that are planning related. It's nice to have a budget there if we want to do a study or analyze something we can do that would have solved.
Yeah, I think we could actually sort of find a point that we, we learned a lot of things, um, in the last couple of years. It was in the massive warehouse repotings that happened for us. As a result of that, we've, um, our planning staff in the town are looking at ways to look forward to lessons learned so that we may take some steps to be able to address those kinds of projects better in the future.
Okay, we can always revisit planning board if there's any recommended updates to the numbers. Other insurance, I usually skip over, that's our general liability. I don't know what year two with the judge. They'll say why, word year two. Slight increase. So the next budget account is the state uniform construction code, the building department. Any questions concerning that? There's some slight adjustments. Most of those line items stay relatively flat. Because the department's a slight increase, less than two percent overall. We mentioned earlier in the overview, the group insurance, I'm not going to revisit that again with the state health benefits, but we know that number. That's, and you see the budget sheets for that, we talked about that earlier.
A million dollars, nearly a million dollars in increase costs for a year, from year to year.
Right, and we're not a, we don't have a thousand employees here.
These people owe the health insurance and they don't.
Right.
A million dollars.
State unemployment, workers' comp, I kind of skip over those, there's nothing too exciting there. Um, next is the police. I believe the chief is here tonight, Matt Holland. I know it's Matt to come up and talk about his budget sum. Um, and again, it's actually operating. We think the police have capital projects, but they don't, they don't have any for twenty twenty-five. And keep in mind, we do the police on vehicles. We've been doing those with the lease. Um, so when we do those, usually we'll be getting three vehicles, sometimes four, but kind of getting more like a three level recently. They're actually operating budget because they're a lease relevant and straight out purchase. So if you had a chance to look at the police, you know, we've, we've really.
At least the purchase.
Yes, yes, at least the purchase. Um, you know, when we get the, uh, PD budget, and we talked a lot about healthcare impacts, but you know, the, the, the flip side of that is because we have some police retirees and some new officers come in, there's obviously a change in their salaries for people that have been there for many years in New Year. So you can see our police line item for salaries has actually gone down some from last year. That's not normal, right? Usually the police budgets go and that, take their number, take it by two or three percent and that's your new number. So as much as the healthcare has impacted, as we save some money on this end, um, again, from a police standpoint, it's the same number of employees. We've just fine tuned those numbers to, um, be more accurate with our new workforce. Um, probably have what, chief, how many new?
New seven.
Over the last year and year and a half. Yeah, so. Big, big turnover, but I think they're getting it ready and it's been, it's been working relatively well. And, um, people in the academy, getting out of the academy, going into field training, getting off the field training and then getting real world field experience. So big changeover in the PD. Other than that, even though the police have the largest portion of our budget, a lot of it's related to salaries and wages and things of that nature. If you look at their budget, it doesn't change very much. But if there's any questions specifically about any line item, you know, I'd be happy to answer it with the chief now, or if we can't get you the answer here tonight, well, we'll get that for you at the next meeting. But again, a lot of their line items stay the same. And a lot of their programs are the same, they have them in place. Yeah, I'm going to let Val, let me do that, because she can give you an idea of some of the things that come out of there. Or Matt can, I can't give you.
Val, do you have that?
It's a whole, there's a whole lot of things.
It's the, um, the cameras on the arms, the cameras, um.
Bodyboard.
Not the bodyboard, because we're still, we're still a grant for that. But it's the, the, what is that called? El, yeah, the, the lens lock.
Oh, lens lock, I'm sorry, lens lock, yes.
Um, and then the, the cameras that are also in those, um, the rooms.
The interview, interrogation, pretend, it's through lens lock.
And then they have mental health line item in there, um. That's pretty much it.
What are these areas? They're all that area, which is really important post.
Well, we're trying, um, we have West one. Right. We have, this is our last year for the bodyboard camera break that we have. So we're trying to make room for that when, when it does come. We're going to have to pay the two forty-four thousand, um, instead of getting a, having a grant paid for it. Um. There's a. So here's what comes out of, um, that line item. It's a financial list, uh, files, the more contract livescan, um, software maintenance support contracts, surf post-salting. Your towing comes out of there, um, staff psychologists, the POS scaling fee, um, all their cards, their Verizon cards that they have in the police vehicles that have them, um, be able to go to the internet, um, the radios, D M S, power D M S, um, their order evidence, software maintenance contract. These are all things that they have listed out. It's on page sixty-one of the budget.
It's in the backup for all.
And that's how we get to it. It could be that, I mean, we may have not, have expended everything yet this year. Um, a lot of times when we do this, the simmer, you know, bills are not in this line item yet. So that very well could be that it could go up and be what we're anticipating it to be.
We could get a, we'll get from council an update on those expenditures because the budget's the same. Deputy mayor's comment is, you know, last year we didn't spend that, so do we need it? Right, in essence.
I'm trying to understand, you know, first, so many things in there, but you can't see, like contracted services. We know from my team, there's a lot of that.
Right, and that's where we. Yeah. We kept the budget the same, but it's the actual, it's the actual versus the expended. So let us, let us do that. Let us take a look at that, we'll give you an update on that. We'll look at every one of those things that come out of that line item and give you an idea of where that, where that is. We're going to have to get that for you. Council.
It just, just my own interpretation as far as the people purchasing these programs concerned. Twenty twenty-three, the expected eighty-two, uh, two, two ten. Twenty, uh, up through, uh, twenty twenty-five, and everything two hundred, John, as far as that. And maybe in a second, are, are we not having as many vehicles? Or is it the interest rate on those leases or less or?
No.
How, how is this happening?
What we did here is we, we've thought, we typically get the three vehicles, um, which this lease includes the three vehicles plus the outfitting. But we also have, um, through their off-duty, um, fee that they charge, there's a vehicle fee that goes into a trust fund that could help offset some of the, this cost. So that's why we brought it down just a little bit, not a lot, just a little bit. Just in case, if it doesn't come in, if we need a little bit more money, we can supplement with that, with that trust fund.
Yeah, if you recall, council authorized that last year. We're starting to get some money in there, which is good. So we're still looking at three, I believe?
Three, three.
Okay, so the fleet is the same and you just explained why it would increase slightly.
Okay. Yeah, that's unfortunately, the outfitting's really gotten worse. So that's a bit, so with the vehicles, you know, we used to get a significant discount on the vehicles from the major manufacturers. That's gone. I think that's, I don't see that coming back after COVID. What do you have for vehicles? I don't even know.
They're getting Durango.
Durango's.
Durango.
Yeah, it's, and it's really the only option. We're hard to come by right now.
In the recruiting, you've just, you mentioned, uh, I'm still a local flavor to the, to the new recruits. Tend to be local?
Uh, yes, yes. We have, we have, uh, off the top of my head, one, two, three Roxbury High School graduates. And, and everybody is, is very local. And like I said, that's, uh, that's the biggest, uh, and it's not, it's not hard, but we're rebuilding. We're focusing all our efforts on, uh, getting everybody up to speed and, and maintaining the, the high level that Roxbury's all to that.
Yeah, I hear from residents local, that, that as a compliment that, uh, we, we're local.
Yes, absolutely. Any other, we're going to get more details on what deputy mayor asked. Any other questions on the PD budget? Cap, operating, so there's no capital projects? Then we're going to jump down while Matt's still here. We have some other pieces to this. So it's the police staff. Get there. Yeah, so you get to the police staff. Yeah, so you get to the police staff, that budget stays relatively the same, slight adjustments and wages.
It's all contractual, isn't it? It's all contractual?
It is, it is, um, you know, that budget stays relatively the same, it's probably one percent different, um, but that's our, the staff component of the, the police department budget.
Yeah, I don't see any issues with that, or crossing guards.
Yeah, and the crossing guards, um, are the same, I think we had the same number. Right, same number of locations, we, we reduced a few last year.
Right.
That were, that were, well, we're at that level. So that's PD.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, chief.
So next on the list, we have emergency management. Um, that's primarily Bob Hackett. We have Bob on a part-time wage, everybody's familiar with Bob, and then, other than, his budget stays pretty much the same every year. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Seventy-four, seventy-five.
Eighty, seventy-five, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so again, that's emergency management. So moving from there. We're gonna discuss fire, and I know we have some of our fire officials here tonight, so depending on any questions that come out, we might rely on them, but depending on the questions, we may or may not need assistance, so. The first, um, component is actually first aid, then we get into fire, so they go by companies, we have first aid, fire company one, you'll see that the majority of these budgets for the fire departments on the operating end are very consistent, or exactly the same as they were in twenty twenty-four, so the first one is fire, company number one, first aid. The budget totals forty-three thousand five hundred, if there's any questions on that. Fire company two, who also is running first aid, twenty-one thousand one sixty, their, their budget's the same as twenty twenty-four.
I have a question, I need to know.
Okay. Then fire company three, right now is not running first aid, so we don't have any budget funds for them. So next on the list is, I believe in the sequence, is fire prevention. Um, operating, we don't have any capital projects for fire prevention, um, we do an increase in some wages in fire prevention. Um, as I had mentioned earlier with some of the engineering inspections, the fire prevention, um, the, the fire prevention officer, his assistants do a lot of inspections, there's a corresponding revenue with this, I think, I think Mike Pellic has been here for many, many years, told us last year, twenty twenty-four, is maybe the first year in many, many years, they've actually gotten all of their inspections done, because they've had enough staff to do that, so that's wonderful, and, um, you know, it's a great revenue source, but more importantly, it's important to do the inspections. We know we have safety issues, we have buildings that catch on fire, so they do a great job inspecting businesses and going in homes, doing smoke detectors, the carbon dioxide, things of that nature, so. Slight increase in fire prevention, but I can assure you that there's corresponding revenue with that, no new staff in that department. So next is fire company one, so now it's the fire side of operating.
Yeah, I'd like to hold off on that, but I have a couple of questions first.
Okay.
Uh, we had a fire chief meeting last night, uh, cost recovery. What do you think with that, I understand, I just found out that, um, the company we have a contract to with for this purchase.
Yeah, it's a little bit convoluted, the person that we actually were working with on our various meetings, she is, I guess purchased the company from EF Recovery. So we have Tony, and really Jim Bryce from Tony's office, trying to figure out how that contract can be possibly assigned to them. Um, they're, the new company is willing to honor the agreement.
I think they, they, they have to, they bought the thing, it's just an update.
I think they're willing to honor it, I think Jim Bryce, we, Jim gave us a response back probably later, at the end of last week, I haven't had a chance to follow up with him, kind of talking about whether or not the existing agreement provides for that.
Provides what?
Provides for an assignment. So it's not really a subcontract, it's an assignment, even though, even, even if we don't have an issue with it, he might tell us there's a problem.
Does the company absorb by another company, or is it bought just from by new, new?
I think they bought them out.
So it's a merger and acquisition, basically, they, they, they acquired the company, and is there, I guess the bottom line here is, is there was an assignment clause in that, in the agreement to allow this to occur, and do we have to tell them we accept that assignment?
I wouldn't be surprised if Bryce didn't have that either, but.
There's something in there, we're trying to work on our language, I gotta talk to Jim Bryce, the new company has no issues with auditing, honoring it moving forward, we gotta get that figured out with Jim, if there's something we have to do, maybe it's just a resolution in front of council that makes that switch to them, so.
No, but I think, I think there needs to be, not understanding completely, you know, that contract they sent us that we slowed down, and I slowed down, is completely different than what we had agreed to with them in advance. They, Bryce didn't wrote up the contract the way we agreed to it, and they agreed to those terms.
And then we got a different company.
Yeah, now we got a different company, so.
Then we had to make sure that that company.
I want those keys crossed with twenty-five.
A hundred percent, and, and so far, our response from the, we, I believe is the, I'm gonna say the owner or president of the new company, is they'll honor the contract that was signed, which includes the changes we wanted, but we gotta figure out how to do that.
Well, this should be that difficult.
Well.
It's a different.
You want me to call the vice or tell you?
No. So we just got that at the end of last week.
Okay.
So that's where we stand on cost recovery.
Well, we, this, this is, like, too many things, they have a long process, and we gotta get to an end, and at some point, die of walls.
Right, well, it would have, the timing one, that couldn't have been worse, from when we approved it, to what apparently the company was purchased, it had to be right around the exact same time, which we had no knowledge of.
It would have been nice if they would have given us the knowledge, they, I'm sure they knew something was up while we were going through the contract.
Right, we could either waive it, it's done with a new company.
Let's get those questions answered, and then, like, since Sean's not here, I'd like to hold off on fire anyway, and we need to talk about the fire truck, which is already been purchased. Hold it on it, I just want to.
Okay. Yeah, we could, we could certainly hold, hold fire, we can just roll that into our next meeting with the operating capital.
John, just out of, just out of, just out of curiosity, that, I mean, obviously, there's an acquisition here, and I agree everything that council Marily had to say, but is, is there, do we even wanna do business with these folks, I mean, have we vetted them out, or, you know?
From the new company?
Is there, is there anybody else that we wanna use, maybe?
Well, we only had one company responded to our initial RF, RFD, or request of proposal, right, we only had one response. We were satisfied with them, once we made the changes to the contract, I believe, that we talked about. So we have no reason not to use them, but, I mean, we might have to bid it again, and if we do, you know, will we with a new company, or if there's other bidders, and one of them's more lucrative to the town, we'll certainly consider that, but we only had one, we only had one, one proposal whenever we did this last fall.
Wow, thank you.
Be able to, if we set the standard.
I'm only saying that if we had, if we did it again and received multiple, we would certainly consider it.
Aren't they obligated to, aren't they obligated to come on up and talk?
They, they do not have an issue with honoring the contract, we have to make sure our, and our legal team is satisfied that we can do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Are they publicly traded, do you know?
I'm gonna say no, no, because I think they're small.
John, we're gonna hold off on a lot of them, so.
I'll roll it into the next meeting. Mayor, we can, I was, I wanted to get through fire type, if we wanna stop at that point, I mean, we can add it to our next meeting, I think we're in a, we're in a good place. So we can do that, we'll add fire, we'll go through other departments, we'll go through other department directors in two weeks, and, um, then we'll, you know, go from there, based on our council's direction, as.
For the next side, then, the next meeting you'll have.
For Bryce?
That, for sure.
Yes. Yes, oh yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Just hearing the banter a little bit about the Kiwanis sidewalks, as a, a lifelong resident, grew up in South of Center myself, rode my bike to Kiwanis Park many times, I'd like to offer a little input on, maybe something that you guys haven't considered, might be another option. There's several dead-end streets that dead-end into Kiwanis Park from the neighborhoods, and I, I think it would actually be more attractive to the neighborhood people to enter the park from the side doors of Kiwanis, rather than coming through the front door on Eel Avenue. You could enter from Toby Drive, there's a, there's a, a walk, a, a path through there, Constitution has a, a dead-end street there.
You are exploring both the Constitution and, uh, what do you call it?
A red light?
Tension pond.
Tension pond, that's working. And on Toby, there's a stream that would be a, it would put up a, a bridge over. An open space, we're looking at the one on Toby, Constitution, they're trying to, the order circles around, so it's a two-place onward, but it's a tension pond. We've also looked at coming down, you know, the old church, churches properly, and, and the first house, and town owns that. We tried to come through there, but it's all empty. So we are looking at all possible.
Good enough, thank you.
Anyone else in the conference? Seeing none up close, focus. Do you have a second session? National motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.